I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Before we go into a moment of silence, I would just ask Administration Council to keep Bill Drummer's family and their thoughts and prayers. Moment of silence, please.
Counselor Galbraith?
Here.
Counselor Heising?
Here.
Counselor Simon?
Here.
Counselor Tierina?
Here.
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Here.
We have six members present. We have a forum.
Okay. Council has had time to review the prior meeting minutes from July 7th through July 17th. Forward on this?
I'll make a motion to accept the prior meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel President Chamberlain and seconded by Counsel Simon. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. After that, we have our committee reports, and we'll start with Finance Committee.
I'm sorry, I don't have any notes here. Okay. Couple things came up. One was the seasonal employee holiday pay. I would like to see employees receive time and a half on holidays. My main concern was the lifeguards, especially when they work on the Fourth of July. And I went down and talked to John Zakowski, Burke, who wasn't there, and he said he did have some difficulty getting people to work on the Fourth of July. And I just think that it's a special occasion, and it's not that many people involved. I'd like to see them get time and a half. I didn't know if that's something we could still do this year, or get gift cards this year, or whatever. Were no recommendations made at the time. Also, would apply to people who are cleaning up after the Fourth of July fireworks. Another matter was a budget amendment. We had an $11,000 increase to Danny Markley's budget, the code enforcer, and that's to produce or pay for software that he needs. There were no concerns about that. That was recommended by Counsel Schneider, myself, and seconded by Counsel President Chamberlain, who passed unanimously. There also was a need for $37,000 budget increase for the scalping of two fields at Biddle Park. Counsel President Chamberlain expressed concern regarding the $37,000 budget increase. He recalled during the previous budget discussions, there had been speculation the city intended to scalp two fields. At the time, he had specifically inquired about this, with the sure that such work was not included in the improved budget, and therefore would not take place. But given that understanding, he was surprised the rest of us were, that fields had in fact been scalped. So, it had not been included in the budget, so now we brought it up that it would be included because it already had been done. Let me see what else. Keith Torbit stated he did not intend to vote against back in relation to the field scalping in the discussion regarding the implication of potential no vote by the committee. However, Counsel President Chamberlain expressed his reluctance, placing the city in difficult position. But he did make a motion to approve the $37,000 budget amendment for scalping two ballfields, and Counsel Schneider seconded and passed unanimously. And then the third issue brought up was the Glenwood assessment fees, which Tom McWaters is still working on, letters being sent, how much, when, where, whatever. I think we recommend that we proceed with the process of terminating the fees, and that would be done over a five-year period. And that was made by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel President Chamberlain, passed unanimously. So those were the items that were brought up at the Finance Committee.
The reimbursement would be done in five years, correct?
Yes, reimbursement would be done in five years, over a five-year period.
Is there a balloon at the end of that, or it's just spread across?
No, five equal payments starting, I think the discussion was December 1st of this year, and then each year thereafter.
Cool.
We'd attach a schedule of what those payments would be to the ordinance that you guys would eventually pass, so there's no, you know, confusion or ambiguity as to when and how much would be paid and to whom.
I do have a question. Any idea the time and a half for the seasonal employees, is that something Council has to propose and pass? Is that done by you, Mayor, or is it done, I mean, how is that handled?
The amount was not that great. Then Jamie would have rather just pay them and not do a gift card, because everybody, you know, you have different scenarios of ages and children still. So she said if we, you know, if you guys are in agreement with this, which I feel, you know, if you can get people to work on. It's not that much. And I'm thinking, I was trying to say, I don't know, it was like three or four thousand, which it wasn't even over the $5,000 mark. So she didn't feel that it really needed, but she wanted everybody to know that, you know, she doesn't have a problem moving forward with it, but she just would wish it would be done in their paycheck as overtime or time and a half, not overtime, as all of the other part-time employees or any employee that gets called out on holiday would get the same thing.
I think it's reasonable, and I appreciate you bringing it up, Steve.
Well, I went to the pool to see Tom Burke, and he wasn't there. And Zakowski was there, talked to him, and he said, "Yeah, I'm the one that trains these people." He said, "There aren't many people around that do the actual training." He said, "I'm one of the few." And he says, "Actually," he says, "I'm seasonal, so I get time and a half."
He gets it anyways, yeah.
And, but, well, he said he didn't get time and a half. That's what he said. He didn't get time and a half. Zakowski didn't.
You said he's seasonal?
He said he doesn't get time and a half for the Fourth of July. That's what he told me.
Okay.
But he said the lifeguards didn't, and he said he did have a little bit of trouble. He didn't say a lot, but a little bit of trouble filling, he said people wanted to go on their family getaways and stuff like that.
And it's just not the lifeguards as well, it's those seasonal help that come in after the, on the Fourth of July, after the Third, when we do our fireworks and have to clean Biddle Park as well. They're seasonal help, so it benefits.
I just think for that one day, it would be worth it to compensate him. That's my personal opinion.
I mean, I think it's just to move forward with it.
Can the pool budget support that? Okay.
I wanted to say something about the field scalping, because I unfortunately had surgery that day and missed that meeting, and I would have had some questions at that time, and I'm not going to ask all those questions now, but I was a part of all the conversations that have happened up to that point about the fields, and that was a big surprise to me. It seems like the kind of issue that needs to be avoided in the future, because it really kind of subverts the authority of what we're here to do in the first place, which is manage taxpayer money appropriately. And I would have had some questions about the appropriateness of scalping those, so it feels like the kind of thing that was, you know, ask for forgiveness instead of permission sort of issue. And it's not something I would like to be facing repeatedly from here on out. It needs to be a one and done, because I know everybody here probably would have had some questions. Was it the wrong decision to do that? I have no idea. It might have been the right decision, but we didn't have the opportunity to, you know, examine that. And I take my, I think, my role seriously in managing taxpayer money, and just to say, "Okay, $37,000 down the drain," when we didn't get to have any part of that, and questions were asked in the past about that specific thing, and we're told it wasn't happening.
Yeah, my, so you mentioned reluctance.
I remember the discussion, and I remember us talking about scalping versus possibly future of development, and it never went anywhere, so...
It might be the right decision. I have no idea.
Right. I know that the board was, kind of, and Shane expressed his opinion, and I definitely remember that when the finance came forward with that discussion, it never went anywhere, because you guys never brought it forward, but I thought you said no to it, but that was, was it the passing of the finance? That's why I wanted the minutes from that, to see the passing of the discussion.
It was the budget.
But it was not in the budget.
It feels like a circumventing of the process that's in place. That's what it feels like. Maybe that was not the intention, but that's how it feels, reading the minutes and being a part of those previous discussions.
I thought, I thought Corinne did a great job in writing the minutes up. Really did summarize the extensive discussion that I shared and the dialogue back and forth with Keith, so I appreciate Corinne writing those minutes up the way she did.
And then you did vote yes on it?
You know, I just don't, because I just didn't feel like where that put us, how we would process that if it didn't get out of committee.
Right.
Then it would come to us as a six-person body. I just felt like I didn't want to put Council in that particular situation and upset the apple cart, so I just, I made my point. I wasn't happy with the way it processed, but in the end of the day, it's a bill we have to pay, so I went ahead and made a motion to move the money.
I think people in the public don't understand what is within our realm. You know, I can't just go vote to fire some random person in the city, or, like, there are lots of things that are not in my, you know, domain, but that is something that is in my domain, and it was taken away. The opportunity for discussion and to make sure that that was the right route.
Yep, I had a wise man once tell me, you know, "Council control is the pocketbook." And here, it seemed like that was taken away from us, so, yeah.
Until it came for the appropriations, and then now it came back. It's got to come back!
Now, you know, now it's in front of us and really, the question, the question was like, what if?
Forced.
What if Council said no to the movement of money? What then? And one thing that I was thinking since that committee meeting is just, I don't want to convey to our department heads that this, this is how, as Council, we want to appropriate money. Like you said, Sarah, asking for forgiveness rather than permission, you know, I'd rather the vice, the other way around, so.
Okay. Thank you. And Sarah, thank you. Okay, so, Finance. We have a recommendation to approve a budget amendment pertaining to the code administrator software.
I will make a motion on that.
I'll second.
Recommendation to approve a budget amendment pertaining to the code administrator software moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel Schneider. Any discussion? Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Galbraith?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Tierina?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six a, zero n, as motion carries.
Okay, then we have the recommendation to cover the cost of the $37,000 of scalping two ballfields.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Recommendation to cover the cost of scalping two ballfields moved by Counsel Simon and seconded by Counsel Galbraith. Any discussion? Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Galbraith?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Tierina?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
I mean, my displeasure is well documented, but with that being said, I vote in favor of the motion, so yes.
Six a, zero n, as motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Recommendation that the Law Department proceed with the process of terminating the assessments for Glenwood Development Project and take the necessary steps to enable the reimbursement of the assessments previously paid over a five-year period starting December 1st of 2025.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Recommendation for all of that moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Tierina. Any discussion?
I just, I don't know about you guys, but I'm excited once the assessment sort of gets settled for activity to take place out there.
I see what's going to happen.
Yeah, right, yeah, I'm pretty excited about that.
I hope some of those possible sales, you know, and development will come to fruition, too.
There's been talking already, people are interested, so that's a good thing.
I think you'll see.
Since they've heard about it.
I've seen some survey stakes out there, so, you know, that's a good sign.
Yep.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Tierina?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Galbraith?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six a, zero n, as motion carries.
All right, thank you. Department head reports. Chief.
Yes. Last Thursday, shortly before 11:00 a.m., staff from both our stations was in town doing some hands-on training with some fire trucks and ambulances out in the public. During that training, one of our ambulance crews was dispatched to an incident north of town, and during the emergent response to go handle that call, they were involved in a motor vehicle accident. One of our, one of our employees was injured in that crash. Two of them signed off, has no injuries, and a second patient that was involved in the crash, not in the ambulance, was also injured and transported. Long and short of it, another vehicle turned into them. They had their lights and siren going. I commend the driver of the ambulance, because at those speeds, and somebody turning into you with a top-heavy vehicle, he managed not only to keep it upright, but within the lane and going forward, minimizing any catastrophic injury that could have come out of rolling it. So, that did work. The ambulance is out of service. Our employee that was injured is going to come back tomorrow on light duty until she gets further cleared. And right now, I'm just collecting all the documentation as it becomes available and working with Jamie and the insurance company to get the repair process started on the ambulance. So, with that being said, we are very lucky, so.
Are we okay to function as, you know, normal, I guess, without it for now?
So we have three ambulances that get used daily on a regular basis. That fourth one sits in the off-month. They rotate monthly, and that off-month is what the city skeet, the mechanic, takes that month then to fit it in a schedule to do the oil changes and the PMing and stuff like that. So that being said, yeah, we are okay right now, but as we all know, like, purchasing police cars and everything else right now, there's a process to it, and it's lengthy, and the repair process on an ambulance is the same. It's going to be a lengthy process, but we're okay right now, so. Any questions on that?
Do ambulance, are ambulances equipped with dash cam video, like?
No, but there is a black box. Yeah, so like, if you were speeding or operating recklessly or whatever, State Highway Patrol could pull that black box and be like, "No, you didn't have your seatbelt on," and stuff like that.
It's amazing what those will tell you. They're like an airplane, black box. Tells you you're accelerating hard, braking hard, and, yeah.
Yeah, my Geico app tells me I brake hard. But on that topic, it is something we're looking at, just due to the road rage and stuff that does go on, it's more of a self-preservation for our crews than anything.
They're fairly inexpensive.
Yes, yeah.
Dash cams are?
Yeah, you can get them all for, they go in all four, all the way around you, so.
Yeah, okay. Keep looking. And then, if there's no other questions on that, we made it through the motorcycle weekend. We did have some crashes out there, some significant injuries, and we had some crashes in the community as well, so our staff stayed busy this past week, end of the weekend. This week, we're looking forward to the geocachers, so we'll see lots of families running around town. And we completed the first three days of our culture and leadership training within the Fire Department, and I've already been in contact with the instructor. He sent me some more stuff as we continue the transition with that program, and we were fortunate to have Heather sit in on the last day of it, and I don't know if you want to speak on it.
Yeah, it was a phenomenal training, the portion, the day that I was able to sit in, and I just want to commend the, you know, the Fire Department for being open to exploring, hey, what are, what are ways we can do things better? What are, where are we faulty? And just being open and allowing, you know, myself as, you know, a community member to sit in on that, and so I'm excited about where that's going to lead the department, because there was so many really, really great things that even I pulled away from it, so, yeah.
Yeah, it was different than going to a class and then, once it was over, you don't look back. This allows us to continue to build on it over time, so.
And I think this process might be good to even bring into our other departments, sorry, and Public Works as well. I just think it would really be beneficial.
Yeah, and Mr. Cloud had sent out kind of like the game plan and many documents, I think, as of today, that were like, here's the follow-up, here's kind of the next steps, which I, I think is phenomenal as well. Instead of, here's a training, have at it, enjoy, it's, okay, what are we going to do next, you know, to make sure it doesn't stop at that, that time, but I would absolutely agree.
Good. I appreciate you looking into that, finding out for your department. I think that's a great program.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
No major updates from last week. Just keeping busy with all the summer events and prepare for homecoming this week. I don't know how well the weather's going to cooperate with the heat and then rain on Saturday, unfortunately, so maybe they're wrong, we kind of hope they're wrong, so for this one, anyway. Just getting ready for that, and our phone upgrade's starting tomorrow. Looks like they're going live, so I think we got everything squared away with our recording and everything like that with IT and our phone company recording going. And last thing, last week, I had a meeting, I expressed to you guys before about the potential of bringing a part-time school resource officer to supplement our full-time school resource officer, so I met with, with both of them last week to kind of formulate our game plan of how we're going to approach that for the new school year and get them started on last. So, excited to see how that can, can help within the schools and keep growing that relationship.
Questions?
I understand the new school resource officer is going to bring along her service dog, Vinnie, right?
Correct.
I don't know, is it difficult to name, change the name?
No, we've worked on that.
Okay.
Vinnie didn't like it.
Vinnie didn't like it. I started looking at Indian names. Vinnie, and I forget what we'd come up with, but it was, yeah.
So Vinnie would be okay, you think?
Vinnie's fine. A couple trees, he was good. Okay.
I'm Vinnie the Chop or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Tom?
Two things to mention. First, just for those folks who were at the committee meeting dealing with the process for the pulling back on the assessments, and I think it's in the notes, but just to confirm, the process will entail be reaching out to folks in writing, getting them to sign the request to undo the legislation and also authorize the repayment of assessments that were paid. And then, separate from that, we will have another document for folks who actually will be getting paid back the assessments, and we're going to have both the previous owner and the current owner or their representative sign, so there's no discrepancy between who should be getting paid and what the amount should be somewhere in that process, so once we get the first document signed, I think, then we'll have an ordinance to put before you guys, which would approve all that. So you're going to have an official role in authorizing that, so you're, by this recommendation, you're just authorizing me to take the next step leading up to presenting to you guys of the ordinance. So I'm suspect it'll be a few weeks, just depending on how fast people will respond, you know, lots of places send out certified, whatever, but, so if anybody gets questions or whatever, they can refer them to me and we'll...
Finding the families and representatives is going to be probably the hardest of who...
If there's any, I think most of the folks who, the original owners are still around, unreachable, I think, but that'll be, now that you guys accepted that recommendation, I'll, I'll get about that process. And then the other thing, just to give you a heads up, so there has been discussion at the administrative level and some of the committee levels of a little frustration with the restrictive language in the charter with respect to who can serve on boards and commissions. Right now, you have to be electorate of the, of the city, and there's so, there's some thought about trying to expand that, maybe to folks within the school district or two-mile radius, there's just, there's various suggestions, but if we were going to ask to change that in the charter and do it this year, we'd have to get something to the Board of Election by August 6th, which means we'd have to have an ordinance in front of you guys by August 1st. So just want to give you a heads up, it may not, may not show up, but I think maybe it will. We're probably going to ask for a meeting next week, if at all possible, of Safety and Code, and maybe a joint meeting with Safety and Code and the Charter Commission. It's really a simple thing, it would just, I mean, in terms of changing the charter, it would be a matter of changing three or four words, but it's important that everybody's on board with what that change would be. I mean, there's pros and cons to limiting it to the electorate, but also expanding a little bit to folks who are involved in the city but may not, you know, be right in the city and then have a vote, so just wanted to give you a heads up, that's kind of, so the sequence would be if we get a joint committee meeting next week, get a recommendation, and if so, then we might have an ordinance for you at the next meeting, and then I turn around and get the ballot information to the BOA. So, and I think the Tree Commission was one entity that had expressed some concern, because there were some people that were highly qualified, but were not, you know, able to serve because of that restriction. But it's impacted other committees, too.
Mm-hmm, it does. Getting volunteers to come into committees and boards is a lot harder these days than what it was 10 years ago, but, yeah, I do know the Tree Commission, Rick just told me that, they're, they're full status now, but, you know, it's, it's trying to get it done so that, you know, if something comes available, they can do that, but I just, I told them, the only thing I, I'm concerned about is if we do this for all boards, I would rather see it done all boards, because then we're going to have each time a board coming, "Well, we want to do this, too, because we can't fill this position." So, and the second thing is that they brought it forward possibly a two-mile radius, which is great, but I really would like them to be in our school district, because if you have people outside our school district making decisions inside our district, I just feel that's not a good mix. We deal with our parks, we deal with our, you know, a lot of, a lot of things that I think would be conflicting, maybe, so that's just my input on that. I think it'd be a great idea to start going out a little bit. It would be very beneficial to get new people on board, so.
Assistant Chief? Yeah, if you could, too, Thursday morning, we kind of talked a little bit about the motorized bikes and scooters and stuff like that, and I think Assistant Chief was pulling up some legislation that's been passed other places, so maybe we could start that discussion at that Safety and Code meeting, if you're up for it.
Sure. It's like under the toy vehicle.
Yeah, it's under that toy vehicle ordinance. This is really the only thing that's closer right now, or...
Yeah.
There's one more thing, is amendment to our sidewalk maintenance. We have everything for snow, yet nothing for weeds, and I think that needs to be looked at.
Down Left Forest Street is becoming...
Oh, look at it now. It looks good. Public Works went and took care of all of it, and we shouldn't have to do that, but I couldn't stand it anymore. It looked awful. Brand-new sidewalk has expansions in them that the weeds just grow. It doesn't matter if it's dry, wet, they're going to grow, and they're going to ruin our sidewalks, and I truly do not feel that Public Works should be having to take care of maintaining that. We do our curbs, our streets, brush, leaves, and, you know, I see people that will maintain their yards and weed whack their yards and eat the weeds in the sidewalks, and I just, I don't understand that. So, that's something that needs to be looked at, and anything else maintenance-wise, there's a few other things. Might be along the...
Steve, you and I are on the Charter Revision Commission. I'm just bringing it up, because I couldn't remember, which, we don't, it's not one that we meet, you know, we don't use it often, so.
Safety and Code, Charter Revision, stand by.
I don't know if you want to, if the Charter Review Commission's going to be part of that meeting, I don't know, it's up to you guys, I guess, but I don't know if you want Charter Review Commission to have to sit through all the non-Charter issues. The Charter issue is something...
If you get one, and then they can exit out, and then you can do your Safety and Code after if you want. Saves some time.
A joint meeting followed by just a Safety and Code meeting?
Yeah, yep. All righty. Any other questions? Okay, let's do some legislation here. First reading of legislation or emergency on Resolution 2025-10. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the lowest and best bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the Burr Road water line project. for the Burr Road waterline project. Declaring an emergency.
I will make a motion. I'll second.
Motion to place resolution 2025-10 on emergency reading moved by Council Hyzing and seconded by Council Galbraith. Any discussion? Council Hyzing?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six A, zero N A's, motion carries.
Final.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2025-10 on final reading moved by Council Tiarina and seconded by Council Schneider. Any discussion? Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Hyzing?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Six A, zero N A's, motion carries.
Resolution 2025-11 is a resolution to amend resolution 2021-21 designating public depositories and awarding public monies and authorizing the mayor to sign memorandum of agreements with the public depositories in the city of Wasean and declaring an emergency.
Someone refresh my memory. That doesn't mean anything to me. What's this one about?
I think it's a name change?
Yes, we changed, it's a company.
Yeah, company.
Of where we do our deposit, some of our funding.
Okay, I remember reading that. I just can't tell from this.
They changed company name, more or less bought out another, reactive, go through.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2025-11 on emergency reading moved by Council President Chamberlain and seconded by Council Simon. Any discussion? Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Council Hyzing?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Six A, zero N A's, motion carries.
Final.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2025-11 on final reading moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Hyzing. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Hyzing?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six A, zero N A's, motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-12 is a resolution to amend ordinance 2024-12, annual appropriation ordinance by authorizing the Director of Finance to increase or decrease certain line account appropriations within the various funds listed within the year 2025.
Well, I've said yes a couple of times now to this, so I might as well make a motion, yes.
I'll second.
Motion to place resolution 2025-12 on first reading moved by Council President Chamberlain and seconded by Council Galbraith. Any discussion? Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Galbraith?
Yes.
Council Hyzing?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.